This is Serge, the Dina Mayor of Imperial Beach. It's December 2nd, 2020, and welcome to our City of Imperial Beach City Council meeting. I am calling the regular meeting to order and council members and staff, please mute yourselves. And when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. And obviously, I think the best thing to do is just put your camera on when you'd like to speak. But obviously, we'll be calling you guys in order. I want to thank everyone and welcome everyone to our regular meeting on December 2nd, 2020. And thank you all for your patience and understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. And I continue to improve my Zoom management, meeting management process. This meeting must comply with the executive order N 2920 and all other provisions of state law. And now our city clerk will announce the public comment process. Thank you.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov as no breaks will occur between agenda items. Please note in the subject line, the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Written comments will be read by myself or staff for only up to three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom via desktop computer, cellphone app, or telephone. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, you will be instructed to use the raise hand feature on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Again, public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Kelly. And now could you please take the roll? Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Patton?
Patton here.
Councilmember West?
West here.
Councilmember Spriggs?
Spriggs here.
Mayor Protem Agiri?
Agiri here.
And Mayor DeDina?
DeDina here. Great. Thank you, everybody. And now we have the item on the agenda where we talk. We brought updates on reports and assignments, starting with Councilmember Patton, please. Thank you.
Councilman Patton, if we could start with the pledge of allegiance. Sorry about that. Sorry for the interruption.
Yes, I'll go ahead and start that right now. Place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hopefully, Mayor, you didn't have somebody planned.
No, don't. It's fine. You know what? Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Anyway, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Okay. Doing my duty. I just wanted to say it's great to be here tonight and see all of you. Small Business Saturday seemed like a big hit. Keep supporting your businesses in Imperial Beach. And the second big thing I want to talk about, which I talked about last time, was masking up, social distancing, and watch a group gathering. You know, we're getting close to the end of this tunnel that we're in, but we're far from it. And don't let your guard down. One thing I am seeing, which is kind of disturbing to me, is I'm seeing a lot of people walking with their mask down by their chin. And then when you walk by them, even though you're wearing your mask, they don't take the time to put their mask up over their face now. And it makes me want to scream, which apparently I can do after December 9th. But please, please, please mask up. It's the right thing to do. It's a responsible thing to do. And I see it a lot on seacoast, and I see it on Palm, up by the beach, as well as Imperial Beach Boulevard by the beach. So anyway, please mask up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Now, Mr. West.
Incur 100% there, Councilmember Patton. So here we go. So the biggest thing I want to talk about is there was a ruling today at the California Public Utilities Commission based on a letter that San Diego Community Power, which Imperial Beach is a part of, submitted after our board meeting on 19 November. And the decision was really, it's really an important one because it was, it's based on the proposed decisions based on SDG and E's 2021 Energy Resource and Recovery Act forecast. And that really what that forecast does is it lays out the proposed rates that they are going to do. And included in the commission's adoption of our forecasting, the San Diego Community Power suggested changes to the SDG's bill of determinants used to calculate this 2021 bundled customer rates. The San Diego CCA, we pointed out the proposed bundle rates were artificially low because they were calculated on outdated sales information that did not account for the CCA's departure from SDG and E's load bundle. So the proposed decision agrees that SDG and E should update its billing determinants pursuant to the straightforward mythology methodology that was put forward by San Diego Community Power. And they should do so in a timely fashion, which is really important because it's a short deadline before the end of the year. And they have, they also said that they wholly failed to support its decision that it is somehow required to rely on outdated sales forecasting. So if adopted, the updated billing determinants will decrease the current system average bundled rate by 2.06% rather than the 12.35 projected by SDG and E. So this was, this is a big deal for ratepayers and a big deal for the future of San Diego Community Power. And we're really happy that CPUC agreed on our behalf. So that's really all I got, Mayor. Passing it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Councilmember Spriggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for the delay. On the 20th of November, the statewide sea level rise working group met for the final time this year to finalize the agenda between the coastal counties, coastal cities, and the coastal commission for the December 17 workshop with the coastal commission on local, with local governments on the way forward regarding sea level rise planning. And I'm, I think we have a reasonably good agenda for that meeting. And I'm looking forward to it on the 17th of December, later this month. Meanwhile, the League of California Cities is, starting yesterday, is going through a one-week process of league leaders working out policies, policy priorities for next year, for 2021, for the League of California Cities in their lobbying efforts on behalf of cities with the state government. And we don't, I don't know how that's going to turn out. There was a major survey conducted of all the cities a few months ago, and those results are feeding into the process. But I'll tell you what I have listed as priorities. Number one is climate resiliency. And this is all about preparation, response, and recovery from foreseeable environmental trends such as wildfires, increasing temperatures, drought, and sea level rise. So the attempt here is to incorporate all of the issues of concerns, not only the coastal cities, but to the inland cities who constitute the majority of the league. And hopefully, we'll be able to incorporate our issues along the coast into a single policy priority for the league. And this is difficult to do because the majority of the cities are not coastal, but a majority of the population and the resource, the economic resources of the state are coastal. So that's a little bit of a dichotomy for the league. The next priority I suggested is housing and homelessness. This has been a league priority for many years. And we need moderate income and affordable housing, as well as housing and other services for the homeless. So I think that'll probably make the list. And the third one is economic development. All cities have been deprived of a major tool, that is to say redevelopment authority for the last several years, including us. And this is a tool that allows local citizens to set priorities for economic development, including a housing authority where we can do something about affordable housing. So we haven't had that for many years, and I hope we can get the league to lobby hard to bring it back. So those are my three priorities. There's many other priorities, like public safety, et cetera. But you know, it's a tough process. You've got to list your top three. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Spriggs. And go ahead, Mayor Protem Agiri. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a great holiday and were able to spend time with your loved ones. I want to thank everybody who stayed at home and observed the shelter-in-place guidelines. I think that's going to make a huge difference. We obviously have a lot of tragedy this year, but a lot of things to be thankful now that we've have a vaccine and will be able to inaculate those in our community that are at highest risk. So for that, we should be very thankful. It was kind of a quiet week, a couple of weeks for me. We didn't have an MTS board meeting or anything like that. But I would like to extend an invitation. We will be hosting, co-hosting a food drive in partnership with Murphy's Produce with a Purpose and Ironworkers Local 229 that will be hosted on December 19th. We will be putting out the details for that event. It will be entirely contactless. We're asking families who are in need of food relief to join us via car. So keep on the lookout for a flyer for that for the exact time and location. Again, that is December 19th. Murphy's Produce will help us feed up to 700 families. So please put the word out. If you know anyone who is struggling, December 19th, we will have that available for everyone. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Agiri. And we'll make sure we get information on that out on the city website and email blast and as well, social media. So just a couple of things, and it's nice to see Supervisor Cox here. He and I were attended meetings with the EPA on 19th and 20th of November to talk about really the set of recommendations and solutions for infrastructure to stop the flow of sewage across the border. Obviously, I think most of us, all of us on the US side of the border, want to make sure that we have the most of that $300 million spent on US side investment. And I know, see Supervisor Cox shaking his head, I do appreciate his leadership. He's been a strong voice to make sure we move forward and really helping us with the EPA. But it seems to me that the EPA leadership, staff, and the political leadership are in line with that. I think there's discussion about how much money will be spent in Mexico. The City of Imperial Beach, the state of California, another county and others have been clear that we just can't, we need to make sure the balance of that funding is in the United States. And that's what's going to make the big difference. There was some discussion about Punto de Banderas. And it's clear that, in an article in the Voice of San Diego, that if, you know, that these private sector companies come on with water reuse projects that they pay for and the Mexican government pays for that, it takes a burden off the United States of having to treat two on a sewage. But we have to take strong leadership on this regardless of the administration. I think it's, it's going to be incumbent upon us at the local level to really push folks in Washington, but also in Mexico City and in Baja to get this job done. So we'll be meeting with the EPA leadership, senior leadership next week as well to talk about this. And I'm pleased, it really does seem that they want to make some progress before the end of this administration, which I think is, just shows their commitment to this process. So that's good. Additionally, on the 20th, thanks to Councilmember West for attending the Sandag meeting. I was in the EPA meeting, but I did a little bit of that meeting. But the Borders Committee in the afternoon was great, and I think it was Supervisor Cox, maybe his last meeting. I'm not sure. He's been a, I know he helped found that committee. I'm the chair of that committee. And this year, we had our annual tribal symposium, which is really moving and a really inspiring event where our tribal partners in San Diego, our 18 tribal governments that we have through the Southern California Tribal Chairmen's Association, met with Sandag and our community partners and stakeholders throughout the region, as well as Mexico, to talk about significant issues that are impacting our tribal partners. So that was a commitment on the part of the Borders Committee to Sandag to really increase our work with our tribal partners. So that was a very nice and actually moving event. So I appreciated being able to share that. And then this week, we've had additional meetings with the staff of Senator Feinstein to talk about just a strategy for moving forward in next year and legislation that's being proposed by the Senator and others to get more action and more, better set of parameters for addressing these cross-border flows, which we support. And then a very nice meeting with the Kreuzkamp Foundation that we'll be hearing more about today and their generous donation to Imperial Beach and potential other investments that they can make. So very pleased with that. So with that, I think that's it. And I know Andy will be announcing and showing some photos of our brand new, brand new project on the pier that we're all very excited about since it's taken a bit of time, but very thankful for. So with that, I will turn over to City Clerk Kelly, who has an announcement, followed by Fire Chief French and City Manager Hall. Take it away. City Clerk Kelly?
Mayor, this is City Manager Hall. Wanted to let you know that, there she goes. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I was muted. This is City Clerk Kelly. I'd like to announce to the public that the City of Imperial Beach is now accepting applications for vacancies on the Design Review Board, Parks and Recreation Committee, and the Tylenol's Advisory Committee. Applications are available on the city's website at imperialbeachca.gov. And the deadline for submitting applications and resumes is at 5 o'clock on Monday, December 21st. If there are any questions out there, please feel free to contact me. My contact information is there on the screen. And I'd also like to note that on the consent calendar, item number eight is a request to City Council to extend the terms of office for members on boards and committees with term expirations of December 31st, 2020, which is to allow time for the City Council to complete the appointment process for those positions that are vacant. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now we have Fire Chief French. Take it away, Chief French.
Good evening. This is Fire Chief French. You will see we have on the consent calendar today, a grant from the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation. But the one I'd really like to talk about right now, it's still through the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation. And I'd like to send some thank you to the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation. But this grant is for over $23,000, and it's going to fund turnouts for our firefighters, so structural PPEs. And the thank you I'd like to throw out there, this grant would not have been possible without the support of Supervisor Cox's office. This grant went through the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation and came to us to fund our turnouts, which we are really appreciative of. And I'd like to personally thank Supervisor Cox for his service to our city and to the help that this grant helped with our fire department and with our equipment.
Thank you, Fire Chief French. And we know there's no one that does more for public safety than Supervisor Cox. So thank you. Appreciate that. And now City Manager Hall. Oh, I see all these beautiful, brand-new murals. So anyway, go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, Mayor, we really want to thank the Port of San Diego. Just recently, they have completed these murals on the pier. You can see them on the screen. They look great. So I hope everyone will take an opportunity to go out and see these new murals on the pier. We really appreciate the support that we get from our local port commissioner, Dan Malcolm, as well as all the support that we get from the port. They are a great partner. They make a big difference in Imperial Beach and really appreciate the continuing improvements that they continue to do for us in the Tylenol's area. So I hope everyone will get an opportunity to go out and see the new murals. They're great. And then, Mayor, I would ask the City Council if we could get a motion to suspend the agenda and take items number one and two of the successor agency right after consent because we have some consultants on the line, and we'd like them to be able to give their presentations, and then they can leave the meeting. So if that's something that the City Council would consider, we would appreciate it. Again, that's items one and two from the successor agency items right after consent. Thanks, Mayor.
West, so moved.
Is there a second?
I can second.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Spriggs, second. And just to comment on the murals, I know that Mr. Patton and I are flashing back to our sundec and OP teenagers on the pier and in the water around the pier with those stripes. Everybody had sundec or OP shirts and shorts with that kind of striped configuration. So we're definitely, I know I'm very into and appreciate the retro vibe of this artwork. So thank you very much. I know, great, Supervisor Cox knows exactly what I'm talking about. So anyway, with that, City Clerk Kelly, can you take a roll call vote, please?
This is City Clerk Kelly. I will now take a roll call vote. There has been a motion by West, second by Spriggs, to take IB, RDA, SA items one and two after the consent calendar. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
I just wanted to comment for the record that maybe the first motion carried were a discussion about sundec and OP 70s retro surf culture or design. So anyway, with that, I would like to move to public comment. And City Clerk Kelly, can you announce public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For, okay, it looks like we have some oral comments. So for those of you participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to participate. And the first speaker is Chelsea Burks. Please unmute yourself and begin.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor DeDina and City Council members. My name is Chelsea Walzak Burks. I'm the Senior Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association of the San Diego Region. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Californians for Less Soda Coalition. In October, you heard public comment from our Black Health Partner, Dr. Ramon Hernandez, about the harms of sugary drink consumption and the need for communities to support their residents' health. He also informed the council about AB 1838, a state law that took away cities' abilities to improve public health, address inequities, and raise revenues by taxing sugary drink manufacturers. Speaking tonight to urge the council, put a resolution on the agenda that supports overturning AB 1838. This law stands in the way of local control, community well-being, and health equity. We at the Californians for Less Soda Coalition feel that communities like Imperial Beach should have the option to pass sugary drink taxes if they decide it's right for their community. Sugary drink taxes have proven extremely effective at fighting the root causes of diabetes, obesity, heart disease, and other negative health implications. They protect residents from big sodas racially and ethnically, ethically targeted marketing and, all right, that disproportionately affects Hispanic, African-American, and low-income communities. These policies also raise local revenues that can go back into the community to fund important public health programs and help those disproportionately affected by the pandemic. We estimate that Imperial Beach could raise over $1.2 million annually from just a two-cent-per-ounce tax on sugary drinks, drink manufacturers. And now more than ever, as the world reels from health and economics consequences of COVID-19, cities like Imperial Beach need this policy option to make residents and city finances healthier in the short and long term. State is fast approaching their 2021 legislative session, so it's critical that communities voice their support for restoring local control. In fact, AB 1838 can be overturned by a simple majority vote of the legislator and signature by the governor. But state legislators have said that they need to hear from cities and counties to consider overturning that law, which is why it's important that Imperial Beach voice their support. Our coalition can provide a draft resolution for the council to consider and act on quickly. Nearly 10 California communities have already passed these resolutions, and we think that Imperial Beach should be heard in this effort. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you so much. And another speaker or comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Becky Rapp. Please unmute yourself and begin.
Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a mother and youth group mentor for the increased persons and adults. It is very important the council remain educated and aware of data surrounding marijuana use as that data is constantly being updated. Cynthia Burke, Sandag's Director of Research and Program Management, reported on how youth's attitudes around marijuana have changed. The survey states that youth have become less concerned about any potential harmful effects. This sense of desensitization is concerning as the survey states that 58% of youth said that the first drug they tried was marijuana. It is no secret that our youth are home feeling isolated and uncertain of their future. They're suffering, and it shows in the emergency rooms. Dave King, Executive Director for San Diego Imperial Valley High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, stated, "We are in the midst of a vaping epidemic. Emergency department visits and admissions for any related marijuana misuse has increased by 89%. Hospitals are seeing, on average, 29 discharges a day due to marijuana, and it remains the primary drug of choice for youth ages 12 to 17 entering treatment. I urge you to take action in educating the community and start increasing awareness among youth and the negative effects of marijuana use." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joan Jones. Please unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening. My name is Joan Jones, and I'm the Executive Director of the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation. The Fire Foundation is proud to have been able to provide over $30,000 to your fire department for much-needed equipment, including disinfecting lamps, PPE, and cleaning supplies to help fight COVID-19. We also were able to provide two chainsaws, which you will be voting to accept tonight, and the nine sets of structured PPE that Chief French just spoke with you about. These grants were made possible by funding from the San Diego Foundation, Sempra Energy, and working through Supervisor Cox's office, as Chief French alluded to. The grant came through the San Diego County Board of Supervisors Neighborhood Reinvestment Program. The Fire Foundation's goal is to make San Diego the safest county in the nation. We do this by working with fire chiefs throughout the county to identify critical needs and specific needs at the departmental level. We have enjoyed working with Chief French and look forward to continuing our collaboration with him and the city to fund Imperial Beach Fire Rescue Department's equipment needs. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Next speaker or comment?
For the public attending via Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Mr. Mayor, that is it for public comments.
Great. And now, thank you so much. And now the public comment period is now closed. And now we have the highlight of the evening, although we have many things on the, this is the best one. We have a motion to approve the proclamation honoring Supervisor Cox for his many years of public service. Is there a motion?
Patton, motion.
West, second.
Great. City Clerk Kelly, can we take an oral roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been a motion by Patton, second by West, to approve the proclamation. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye. And so now I will turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Ed Spriggs. I know he really wanted to read this and has served with Mr. Cox for over 12 years. So go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and it really is an honor to read this proclamation. And given the, how much Supervisor Cox has done for, and over such a period of time for Imperial Beach and South County, I'm going to read pretty much the whole thing. This is a proclamation for Greg Cox. Whereas the City of Imperial Beach honors Greg Cox for his service of over 20 years with the San Diego County Board of Supervisors, improving the public safety, health, and quality of life for all the families living in our region. And whereas Greg Cox joined the San Diego County Board of Supervisors in 1995, and ever since, he has been a tireless champion for South County, representing the more than 631,000 residents of the vibrant multicultural neighborhoods of the First District, where he has lived his entire life. And whereas during his tenure, he shepherded an array of And whereas during his tenure, he shepherded an array of major amenities for his district, including three vast regional parks. The Waterfront Park on the San Diego Bay in Barcadaro, new libraries and community centers in Bonita, Lincoln Acres, the Living Coast Discovery Center, the Olympic Training Center, and for Imperial Beach, the Bay Shore Bike Way. And whereas Greg has been a champion for Imperial Beach specifically and has been instrumental in the construction of the award-winning San Diego County Library, Imperial Beach Branch. And whereas Greg's reputation as a proven trusted leader resulted in key appointments to the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority and the California Coastal Commission. He is the only elected official in California to have been elected to by mayors and city council members as president of the League of California Cities and by supervisors statewide as president of the California State Association of Counties. In July twenty eighteen, he was elected president of the National Association of Counties, representing over three thousand counties across the nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of Imperial Beach take great pleasure in honoring and recognizing Greg Cox for his many years of amazing service to the county of San Diego and District One by proclaiming Wednesday, December two, twenty twenty, as Greg Cox Day in the city of Imperial Beach. Congratulations Supervisor Cox, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Greg, um, and just Greg, we'll turn it over to our council members to make some comments, and hopefully you can, I know you're probably doing this all the time, but I know it means a lot for everyone for you to be here. And I know your service has meant a lot for all of us, especially Imperial Beach. So I'll start with, with Councilman Patton.
And there, okay. Greg, so glad you're here tonight. You know, huge shoes to fill, like size eleven or twelve. You know, what can I say about him? Greg Cox, from the moment I met him a little over eight years ago, he has been nothing but great, always friendly, approachable, always there at our events. And to me, he's one of the best speakers I know. I really admire his speaking to large groups. He's always prepared, humorous, and many times, he has no notes. I don't, I'm not saying you wing it, but you pull it off in such a smooth fashion that I wanted to emulate you every time I got up to a podium. Greg Cox has been an asset to Imperial Beach as well as obviously all of San Diego County, as Mr. Spriggs mentioned in the proclamation. I'm thankful to know you, Greg. You're a great man, and I wish you all the best. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Councilmember West?
Greg Cox, you know, it took me a year to stop calling him Supervisor Cox. And every time I would do that, he would go, Mark, call me Greg. And I just want you to know that that shows just how approachable and how much of a good person Greg Cox is. He has been doing this for a long time, but he's never ever strayed away from being who he is and what he wants to give back to the community. And it's really, it's something that we all could learn so much from, and I've learned so much from him. I sit on the two boards with Supervisor Cox at the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority and the San Diego Bicycle, the Bay Shore Bike Way. And it's amazing the level of knowledge that Greg always has. I remember we were sitting, talking about a portion of the Bay Shore Bike Way that we wanted to kind of change the direction of it. And he rattled off without even thinking about it, oh yeah, that's owned by so-and-so. And we talked to him, and we can get, we can get that done. And let me, let me, let, let me let my office reach out and, and in the, it's that knowledge that you have throughout South County that's just amazing. And you have the knowledge and the Rolodex to really reach out to all these people. So I have learned so much from Greg, and I know all of us have. And you will be really missed. And like Councilmember Patton said, there are big shoes to fill in District One. You are the epitome of the person who knows how to work on both sides of the aisle to get work done, because you know that that is exactly what's the most important thing, is getting things done. And you proved it, and your track record is, is an exemplary example of that. So, Greg, you'll be missed. I'll see you around, though. I hope you'll be on the Bay Shore Bike Way at some point.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. West. Councilmember Spriggs?
Yes, in my own words, I have to, I have to echo what my colleagues have said on the council. And there's so many different perspectives on, on you, Greg, and your, your great service and your great personage, personage as a friend and colleague. And I certainly have shared that and felt that for, you know, for, for over ten years now. We didn't mention really in the proclamation, one of your great achievements, which is the forwarding of the, of the coastal, the California Coastal Trail, something you've been very, very committed to. And I've had the, the honor of being able to try to help out as in my role with the League of California Coastal Cities. This coastal trail runs all the way from the northern border to the southern border of California. And the challenge is much like that of the Bay Shore Bike Way, but on a grander scale. And that's to find continuity along that very, very variated terrain of the California coastline. But one day, it is going to be a wonderful trail for hiking and biking, et cetera. And that's going to be thanks to you, Greg, and I'm sure it's going to probably bear your name. It's already been mentioned how you come to all of the events in Imperial Beach. And it's just amazing with a busy schedule like yours that we're able to, anyone in Imperial Beach is able to see you, walk up to you, chat with you at events like Sun and Sea and, and other activities in Imperial Beach. And it's just great to see you. And I hope you will still come to Imperial Beach and enjoy these events with us and, and share your company with us. I would very much look forward to that. Goes without saying, the library is a work of art in and of itself. And that will always be something to remind us of you and your support for Imperial Beach. Personally, I'll never, I'll never forget how pleased I was that you were able to appear at my retirement ceremony at UCSD. And the words you spoke there were very meaningful and very, I'm very grateful for that as well. And you are true, a true friend and a true friend of Imperial Beach. And we're going to miss you, but not too much because we hope to see you fairly often going forward. Thanks for everything, Greg.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Spriggs. Mayor Protem McGarry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for your years of service, Greg. I was trying to remember how long it is that I've, that we've known each other. And I think one of my first meetings or memories I have of us together was at the first Tijuana River Valley cleanup that we co-hosted with the Tijuana River Valley Equestrian Association and all the environmental activists. And from that year on, you attended every single year, every single cleanup. And you have done so much for Imperial Beach. You've done so much to mitigate all the trash in the, in the Tijuana River Valley. It's thanks to you that now we have daily testing. And it's thanks to you really for your leadership that we have the three hundred million dollars that have now been allocated to EPA. I had the honor of, you know, accompanying you and all the other leaders in DC with EPA leadership. And it was phenomenal to see you in action and at that capacity. So thank you for that. And in addition to everything that everybody said already, I mean, you have been key and played a pivotal role in securing funding for our Sun and Sea Festival, for the Ironman, for Symphony by the Sea. And like my colleague said, you're going to leave a huge hole in our community, but I know that you will continue to be a part of it. And I wish you the best in the next chapter of your life, and I really hope to see you around Imperial Beach. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. And you know, I can only say that I know Supervisor Cox or Greg or Coach Greg, because Greg, you never had a problem telling me when I needed to move in a little bit different direction, which is really important. I appreciate that. I appreciate that we could communicate honestly and move together. And what I appreciate about you is really your, the word public service, a public servant, you epitomize that. And I think ultimately, we look at American democracy, it's about these institutions and investments like libraries, right? Like parks and rec that democratize our society and bring people together. And you are the hallmark. You epitomize that, and your, your career really has been about that. And no more, I mean, you say no more, but then other than the Bay Shore Bike Way, which is an absolutely very simple but brilliant thing that brings people together every day, including me and my family and friends. And more importantly, our amazing library, which is our new city hall really, really inspiring piece of, of, of public infrastructure and, and design that really makes people feel happier. It's brilliant. So I really appreciate that. But what I appreciate more about is your vision and then capacity to chart a course forward and make it happen and bring people together around that. And then, of course, you know, I still have this vivid image of you in the White House leading our meeting. And I say that because, you know, you take that for granted, and I think others may have in the room, but you know, it's just, I told you that was your superhero or superpower moment, and it was absolutely brilliant. And maybe for me, at least a culmination of your career with Imperial Beach, but probably publicly is helping lead that, that diverse bipartisan or nonpartisan coalition. So I do have to say, my first meeting for you, with you before I was mayor was about the Tijuana River Valley. I had this image of you in your office at the county with the map, the parcel map of the Tijuana River Valley. And you literally knew the history and price and owner of every parcel in the river valley. And that, that just means because you really carry your homework. So with that, we appreciate all your service to our city, but to our region and of course, our state and our country. And you have had, you have made things better, and you've made things better for everyone, which I think is the most important hallmark and, and the best thing that an elected official can do, right? So with that, I want to thank you. I'm not sure, city clerk Kelly, if we had a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one written comment, and I don't see any public oral comments. But if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and read the oral, the written comment. Okay, the comment is from Eric Seiberson, and he says, "Thank you Supervisor Cox. Few elected officials have delivered more to the South Bay or to the city of Imperial Beach. Your imprint will be forever felt in the region. From the beautiful local library, the historic El Camino Real signage, to clean water and new sewage infrastructure along the border, Supervisor Cox has always built for the people. His capstone will be the brand-new equestrian facility currently being built in the Tijuana River Valley to go along with the ballfields, horse and hiking trails, and other projects built during his tenure. He has been a champion for the entire region. Thank you, sir. I am indebted to you for your work in our region, and I work hard daily as a private citizen to see it is here for generations to come. You are an inspiration. Sincerely, Eric Seiberson, IB native and resident of unincorporated San Diego County."
And Supervisor Cox, this is a movie on Netflix. We'd all be standing up giving you applause. I'm bummed that we can't do that right now, but you definitely deserve it. So we're giving you a virtual silent applause, a standing ovation. But if you'd like to say a few words or just make a few comments, that'd be great.
A few words? Heck, I'd like to make a whole long speech, but I'll, I'll try to keep it short.
As long as you want, I'm sorry.
Well, first off, let me, let me correct a couple of things. I think Ed Spriggs said I've lived here my entire life. I just want to say that, not yet. I hope to have a few more years to be around and still be involved in a lot of these projects. Make sure that they get done. I mean, the Bay Shore Bike Way is obviously something that's been worked on for, gosh, probably over forty years now. And not quite done yet, but we're getting there. And I want to thank Councilman West for his, his service on the Bay Shore Bike Way Working Group. I think Ed was on it for a while also. We are going to get it done. And the good news is the money is there to get it completed, probably within the next five years. So that's something I think we can all take a great deal of pride in. Just for the record, Councilman Patton said I had big shoes to fill. Actually, it's size thirteen. But Nora Vargas may have more petite feet, but I'm sure she's going to do an excellent job. And we're already working with her on the transition. And, you know, Mark West, I told you, you know, don't, don't call me Supervisor, call me Greg. Well, at this point, you can call me anything you want to. I have appreciated the opportunity to work with you on the Airport Authority and on the Bay Shore Bike Way Working Group and really appreciate your commitment to both of those efforts and many more. Serge, it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. You know, you were just a young wild pup a few years ago, and, and I enjoyed working with you and Andy Hall. Let me tell you, you've got a, you've got an excellent city manager in Andy Hall. It has been a pleasure to work with all the council. And Andy has been a delight to work with. And Paloma, I haven't had as many opportunities in many years to work with you in your, your current position, but I really admire and appreciate your commitment to improving the Tijuana River Valley. And, you know, we've, we've done a lot. We've still got a lot more left to do. And I will support you guys any way that I can in trying to make sure that that three hundred million gets spent to resolve the problem once and for all. And so it doesn't impact the, the city of Imperial Beach and, and our beaches along the coastline there. Ed Spriggs, I've had a chance to get to know you and, and your wife, delightful couple. I have really enjoyed the, your leadership and your committee, commitments at the League of California Cities. You know, just a couple of highlights. I mean, when I look at our county library system, let me tell you, there is no library that is better than the city of Imperial Beach. It's beautiful. It's functional. It's really the hub, the cultural center of the community as it should be. And that is something that I really want to thank the citizens of Imperial Beach for the input that they provided on the design and getting, you know, done. Obviously, none of these projects are done by yourself as an elected official. You got to have supportive members of your council, or in my case, my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. But that, that was a project of pure joy. And I know that it was great to see the delight that Joan had in taking over that position as a new librarian and, or June, rather, excuse me. And I know she just retired not too long ago, but she did such a great job and was, I think, so delighted to see that, that library to come into fruition. You know, the one thing that I, I really have enjoyed over the years, and you know, when you're dealing with the county of San Diego, the vast majority of our budget goes to health and human services programs, and that's important. Foster kids, we've seen our foster kids go down from over seventy, seven thousand to now it's about twenty-four hundred. We're doing a lot more with behavioral health. We're getting more people signed up for the benefits that they're entitled to and eligible for. But my real passion over the years has been parks, trails, and libraries and community facilities. And there's a lot to be proud of in South County that I've been just a small part of, you know, working with other people to make those things happen. So I want to sincerely thank the Imperial Beach City Council for the support you've given me over the years. I'm not going away. I'll still be around. And I suspect, I know you've got a couple of members of the council going off, Robert and Mark. I imagine they're still going to be going to different things and staying involved in the community. And, you know, somebody asked me the other day, what I'm going to do after I, after I retire. The first thing I was going to do, and I, you know, I kind of off the hand said, well, I was going to go to Disneyland. Well, hell, I can't do that. They're closed. So I think my, my next best choice is going to be go, going to Imperial Beach, the Hesperine, and just joined Imperial Beach in the beautiful city that it is. You're to be committed on the great job you've collectively been doing to turn it into what I think is, is the most iconic community in San Diego County. And it's, I think, the most underappreciated, but maybe that's a good thing. It is a beautiful committee. You've got a great council, a great city manager, and I wish you nothing but the best in the future. So thank you for this recognition. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Greg. And again, we really appreciate all your support and your public service, your public service, making things better. So with that, fair winds, and we hope to see you soon. Thank you so much.
I'll be around. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have- Now, we have, thanks, Greg. We have the public, we have our consent calendar items number one through 10. I wasn't sure if there are any comments on that. Are there any public comments on that?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. West, you have a comment you wanted to make. Is that right?
Yeah, sure do. Yeah, thank you very much there, Mayor. So I'd like to say something about consent item number 10, which is the installation and purchase of some ballards that we will be doing down the Seacoast Drive. And I think if there's anything that you could say that during this difficult pandemic time that I would argue that is a great thing that we've been able to do was really the multitude of Safe Street events that were conducted along Seacoast on IB, on Seacoast. And, you know, it afforded our citizens and our businesses lots of things. It afforded our businesses the opportunity to expand their restaurant when they were struggling and they couldn't have dining inside. They were actually able, these Safe Streets events allowed them to expand out onto the streets. And then it also allowed our residents to really take back those streets from the cars so where they can walk and really enjoy in a socially-distanced fashion. And unbeknownst to many of our residents, that we were actually moving these events. And we did them because we were discovering new issues that we didn't expect. For example, we had a Safe Street event from IB Boulevard over to the pier. And we didn't realize, you know, that there were some trash concerns that we needed to, some trash pickups at some of our restaurants that we needed to take care of. And then there were also some issues with parking lots. So we actually moved these around a lot. And these ballards that we are going to be purchasing are the result of the data that we gathered at each of these Safe Streets events. And the great thing about this, it's even being paid for by COVID relief money. So as life returns to normal, which will happen hopefully sooner than later, and we get back to the times that we're having our events, you know, the Ironmans and the Sun and Sea Festival, these ballards will provide great safety mechanisms because they're much more sturdy than the temporary ones. And also, they'll save us money because every time we have to pay for these, the temporary ballers put in place, it costs about $3,000 to shut down Seacoast Drive. So it's thousands and thousands of dollars more when you have to shut down the entire thing. So I really want to personally thank and express lots of gratitude to the San Diego Bike Coalition led by Andy Enshaw and the IB Active leader that Silvy Fransek and the members of the IB Arts Bureau for working with the city and more importantly, funding all of the Safe Streets events. So these things were really important, and I think these ballards are going to pay dividends for the future. And I really think that they'll be great. And I think we will use them and learn as we progress through. And I think the great cities of the world all understand that prioritizing people and their ability to walk and bike over cars is one of the most important priorities and a way to make the quality of life better for all. So I'm happy to see number 10, and I think it's going to be a lasting thing for the future.
Thank you so much, Mr. West. And now I'd like to enter into a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items, numbers one through 10. You want to start that off, Mr. West?
So do.
Is there a second? Great, thank you. City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral vote.
There has been a motion by West and a second by Patton to approve Consent Calendar Item Numbers 1 through 10. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you so much. And now we will move to item number one. That's IB redevelopment, IB redevelopment agency successor agency reports and consideration of resolution number SA 20-77 concerning the issuance of tax allocation refunding bonds pursuant to an indenture of trust approving the official statement in the bond purchase agreement. And City Clerk, City Manager Hall will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is City Manager Hall. I just wanted to give a quick update on some of the successor agency items because we may have people in the audience, and I know this can be a confusing issue. So everyone knows the city council serves as the board of the redevelopment agency successor agency. So when the redevelopment agencies were dissolved by the state, the city council became the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. And that's why this is before the city council tonight. Primary role of the successor agency is to complete the wind down of the former redevelopment agency and its activities. So we need to make sure that we dispose of all of the redevelopment agency properties, which in Imperial Beach, that has been completed. And now we need to make sure that we retire the debt obligations of the former redevelopment agency. But some of the things that we try to do, of course, as stewards of the successor agency is we try to save as much money as we can for the taxpayers. And if we can do these bond refundings to lower interest rates in the market conditions that we have at the current time, we can save those debt costs to both, and both the city and the other taxing entities can realize savings from those activities. So some of the things that the successor agency has done recently. In March of 2020, you completed the refunding of the 2010 series tax allocation bonds. The city saved about $2 million on those bonds, and that will come back to the city through increases in our property tax revenue. But on top of that, there was also approximately an $8 million saving for the other taxing entities, including the school districts, the junior colleges, the county, and other agencies. And then on October 5th, the city council also authorized the process for us to refund the 2013 series tax allocation bonds. Now, depending on the market and when we are able to refund these bonds, the city could save anywhere between about $300,000 and maybe upwards of about $565,000. And the other taxing entities could save between $1 and $2 million. So these are really important activities that we're doing and saves a lot of money to the taxpayers and comes back to these entities that they can then use in other ways. So with that, I want to turn some time over to Michael Kremer, who is going to go through just real quickly where we are in the process and talk about some of the savings that we might be able to realize in a really quick presentation. So, Michael, take it away.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Hall. I'm Mike Kremer with Money Get Rose and Associates. We are the financial advisor to the successor agency on this refunding. We've also served as the advisor on past refundings for the successor agency. Next slide, please. So I'd like to take maybe five or 10 minutes and just kind of give a market update to the group and talk about where we are with the refunding options. As City Manager Hall mentioned, we did, Success Raids, you did refund another issue of bonds, tax allocation bonds earlier this year. That was a refunding of the series 2010 tax allocation bonds. Those bonds were priced in January, and they closed on March 4th. That was a tax exempt refunding. The total savings was $5.24 million on a net present value basis. Since then, as we know, rates have fallen quite a bit, mainly due to the effects of COVID-19, which is an economic recession. In response, the Federal Reserve Bank has cut interest rates to try to simulate the economy. What you see here on this graph on this page, or there's two graphs. It's the 70-year U.S. Treasury bond that's in red. And then there's the MMD tax exempt index that we use to track the general level of tax exempt interest rates in the market. And that is a AAA index. That's also the seven-year maturity, so this is a fair comparison. You can see the impact on the markets when COVID hit. We had our first shutdown in March as rates dropped pretty precipitously in March. You do see a spike in the blue line there. That's the tax exempt rate. There was a bit of a market dislocation for tax exempt units as holders were selling, causing rates to go up for, it took a couple of months to get back to normal, really back until about early June when the market returned. You know, in general, this blue line should be below the red line because it is tax exempt. But you can see for a good part of the second quarter this year, it was above the red line. Where we are now in the far end is that the tax exempt 70-year rate is now below the 70-year treasury rate. And rates are still very low. And as the slide shows, rates have dropped over 1% on the 70-year U.S. Treasury bonds since January. And the 70-year rate on the tax exempt index has dropped by about 0.75% since January 3rd as well. And, you know, dropping rates is an opportunity to refinance, just like with you have home mortgage. To refinance your home mortgage, we look to refund bonds in the same fashion. Next slide, please. So this, you may recall, we presented a slide much like this back in August when we went before this successor agency to start this process on this refunding for the 2013 bonds. So there was action by the SA and the Oversight Board, and the Department of Finance has approved the transaction since then. So we are back in front of you now to present a form of the preliminary official statement, the bond purchase agreement, seeking authorization to proceed should market conditions, you know, warrant a refunding at that time. So what we're showing here is that the plan is to refund the series 2013 bonds with another issue, which would come early next year or maybe in the following year. So the 2013 bonds were actually already refunded. They were originally issued in 2003. And the same team worked on that financing back in 2013. So what we show on this table in red, those are the results of that refunding back in 2013. So about $18 million in bonds were refunded. The savings were about $2.9 million on a total basis. And then the rate reduction was about 1.3%. So now we're looking to refund the 2013 bonds again with another issue. So at this point, there's two options on the table. One is a taxable refunding, so issuing taxable bonds to refund the 2013s. That can be done anytime after SA action tonight. Probably the earliest we can get in the market on that would be early January, mid-January, and then close within about a month after that. So given current market conditions to refund that $13 million, the projected savings are about $1.3 million, and the rate reduction is about 2%. We also use a metric where we look at the savings as a percent of the bonds that are refinanced. And that's currently at 8.8% for option one. Now, option two has results that are projected to be about twice that amount. But that's because this is the tax exempt refunding. The challenge is that the IRS restricts how often you can refund bonds on a tax exempt basis. So because these bonds have a call date, a prepayment date, that is not until June 1st of 2022. The soonest, under current law, that we could refund on a tax exempt basis would be March of 2022. So these numbers here for option two are basically hypothetical at this point. This is where the current market is for tax exempt bonds, but we couldn't actually execute this until early of 2022. But the savings, as you can see, are about double what you have with option one. So at this point, we're just getting ready to move forward with one of these two options. So we would monitor conditions and work with SA staff, Andy and Erica, and everyone else to decide when we're going to actually, you know, pull the trigger, go for our bond rating and price the bonds. Next slide, please. This shows the projected savings on an annual basis for these two options. And so the county distributes the savings through their process. And the city receives about 20% through the distribution. And then the other taxing entities receive about 80% of that. So option one on the left is the taxable refunding. The projected savings to the city are about $24,000 a year. To the balance of the agencies, it's about $95,000 a year. And the summation of those is at 1.3 million over the life of the refinancing. Option two, with the greater savings, is roughly a doubling of those figures. So the city would realize in this environment about $47,000 a year. And then the other entities realize about $190,000 a year for total savings of about $2.6 million. Next slide, please. I know there's a lot going on with this slide, but it's a new information we've provided. So we prepared this slide to give more information to the taxing entities on the benefits of these bond refundings. So this is the actual savings from the 2010 bond issue, the refunding that closed earlier in the year on March 4th. So these bonds were refunded. These savings are locked in on a total basis. As you see in the far right column, it's about $750,000 a year for the first 12 years, and then about $400,000 a year for the last three years for a total savings of $10 million. And then we have the allocation here to all the taxing entities, the county, the city, some of the school districts, the college district, et cetera. And Imperial Beach's share is about 21.7% of this. Now, these shares are based on the distribution out of the RPTTF for fiscal year 1920. Now, these shares, I think, tend to change possibly a bit from year to year over time. So we're just taking these percentages and applying these to the savings going forward. So these dollars, as far as how they're allocated amongst the entities, could shift a little bit. But the total savings, these are locked in because the bonds were priced and they're already closed. Next slide, please. This is a similar presentation, looking at the refunding in front of the successor today. This is the refunding of the 2013 bonds. So under that option one, which is that taxable refunding of the 2013 bonds, this is a projected savings allocation amongst the taxing entities. So we're allocating that $119,000 a year across the eight primary taxing entities, with the city receiving on a projected basis about $25,000 per year. Next slide, please. And I think this is our last slide. So this just shows a similar presentation for option two, which is that tax exempt refunding, that we would have to wait a year to price. And by waiting a year, I'll repeat this again, you know, the city does expose itself to interest rate risk. So we know where those rates are now, but we can't lock them in. So if you want to wait with the expectation those rates would be better in a year, that's fine. But there's a chance that rates could go up. They could stay the same. They could be lower. We just don't know. It's more of a general view on the economy and where things are going to be in about a year from now. I think that's it for the slides. Any questions?
Thank you, Michael. This is City Manager Hall. Mayor, I just wanted to maybe clarify what we're seeking from the board members tonight. And so what we're looking for is approval from the board for resolution SA-20-77, which identifies the official statement and the bond purchase agreement and some of the other technical matters that are included in the resolution. And that's the recommendation from staff, and we are seeking a motion and passage by a majority of the board.
That's great. Mr. Spriggs, before you go, just to make it fair, I want to go back to front because we always go one way and not the other. So I'll start with Mayor Protem Agiri. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Kremer. I just have a general comment. I will be supporting the resolution. But I just want to point out that I don't want something to be missed on how important these decisions and the implications that these decisions have on other entities, not just on the city of Imperial Beach. For example, a total savings for the South Bay Union School District will equate, depending on the option that we go with this year, but just combined, whichever option we go with this year in combination with last year, South Bay Union School District will be saving approximately $3.1 to $3.5 million. So that has huge implications, especially for agencies that are, you know, financially struggling, especially after this pandemic. Same case for Sweetwater Union High School District, $1.78 million to $1.9 million in savings that those districts can now turn around and use for our students and our kids locally. So I just wanted to ensure that that was mentioned and that's not lost on the members of our public and our residents. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. And now we turn to Councilmember Spriggs. Thank you.
Thank you, and good points, Councilmember Agiri. I'd like to just ask a couple of questions for clarification and then, you know, make a comment depending on the response. I guess the first question is, do we have any say in whether we adopt the immediate approach? in whether we adopt the immediate approach or the wait-and-see approach? Is that something that's before the council, or is that going to be left to the professionals?
Councilman Spriggs, this is Manager Hall. That decision solely rests with the board. And so what, again, one of the things that was directed of staff back in August was to stay on top of these interest rates and to monitor those, and to take advantage of the interest rates at the, at the best possible time. So one of the things we're monitoring right now is that difference that you can see between the taxable issuance and a tax-exempt issuance. And you can see there's quite a difference. And so what we're, what we're watching right now is to see if the tax, tax-exempt rate starts to climb at all, and then monitor that against the tax, the taxable issuance. Right now, if you're asking staff, and Michael may have a different feel for that, I think it warrants waiting. I, I don't see a huge run-up in either interest rates or inflation for the next several months as the country grapples with what's happening with the COVID situation. I don't anticipate that the Fed will take any action in terms of interest rates. But we will closely monitor that almost on a daily basis, myself and Erica and Joanne. And we, we just want to make sure that we take advantage of, of the best possible savings for the successor agency.
And thank you, thank you very much for that, City Manager Hall. Next question is, just to clarify in my own mind, one window was March and the other one was a year from now. Could you, could you go back over which of those, what those two windows are for the, for the tax-exempt decision?
Yes, if we maybe want to turn to, to one of the earlier slides there.
Very hard to read those.
So for option one, the taxable refunding, our numbers are based on closing of the refunding late January of '21, so in about less than two months. We could actually price and lock in those rates in early January, early to mid-January, and then close a few weeks later. So there's, you know, there's not a lot of waiting there. With option two, the tax-exempt option, we have to wait on that until early 2022. So we could, you know, that one is the one that we expect to, can close no sooner than March 3rd of 2022. Those, those bonds could be priced, meaning their rates are locked in by, I would say, late January of 2022. So about 13 months from now.
Okay. In order to hit a break-even point between the savings that we would achieve with the taxable bonds moving forward more quickly as, as of January, as you just mentioned, how much of a rate increase before we actually have a savings that has come down to where we would be right now with the tax, with the taxable bonds? In other words, how much of a, of a, of a, of an increase in the tax-free bonds interest rate would be required in order to get to the break-even point that we would anticipate executing on the tax exempt, I mean, on the taxable bonds in January?
Yes, that's a very, actually a very good question. So that is, that break-even is about an increase of about 0.9% on the tax exempt. So if, by waiting for the tax exempt rates, if those rates are to creep up, and if they reach to a point where they were about 0.9%, just less, just less than 1% higher than they are now, you would have been better off executing the taxable refunding in a couple of months.
Yeah. And we don't have a, sorry. We, we don't have a time machine, so we can't go back once we're there in the timeline.
Can't go back. And in the future, if you see an increase in tax exempt rates, you also would have seen an increase in taxable rates, too.
That's exactly what I was just going to say, that if we wait very long, we're going to see both rates climbing. And then we can't go back to where we are today or, or in January of 2021. So then the question is, from your standpoint as a, as a financial professional, this is where the crystal ball comes in. There are so many factors, including how, what kind of economic recovery we have, et cetera. But I'm kind of a student of the economy and the financial markets, an amateur student, not a professional like you. And I, it looks like the markets are, are expecting a COVID recovery in around the time period we're talking about here, looking towards the middle half of 2021 and onward. And if that happens, there's going to be a larger demand for money, and interest rates are likely to, to climb, and they may climb across that, that amount, that 0.9% that you mentioned. And they certainly will be higher for the taxable bonds as well. What do you say about that in terms of what the economic forecasting is looking like for the economy? Once, since these immunizations are going to now be taking effect during that, during the next year, and we may have the prospect of a revived economy?
You know, the, the forecasting is definitely outside of my wheelhouse, but I would say that the scenario you mentioned certainly could, could come to pass. So we could see that happen next year. I will just add that the Fed has also said they intend to keep rates low for the foreseeable future. So for quite a while, as, as the economy rebounds, we still have pretty high unemployment and a lot of their problems with the recession. So I think it'll take us a little while to get back on track. The vaccine news certainly is positive, and that has, that has moved the market a little bit in the past few days. It's, it's boosted stocks. And in inverse way, it's kind of pushed, pushed bond rates, interest rates up a little bit. We've seen a little bit of a climb in rates in the last six weeks, as that page up now on the screen shows. But we're still at low levels. So it's, at this point, it's a judgment call. I think we're going to have to wait and see, you know, how things settle out with the new administration in Washington, and maybe look into the first quarter of next year on a calendar year basis and see how things are looking with the economy.
One last question. Do you think a stimulus package of a trillion or on that order would have an impact on the interest rate picture?
I think you might see a little bit of what they call crowding out from that as, as the government does that and has, they'll finance it with their own debt, right? So they'll, by issuing the more treasuries, they'll drive up rates a little bit. But I could also see that the economy is, is staying at tough times or gets worse, that that, that that could offset the crowding out from, from the borrowing.
Yeah. Okay. Well, my, my thought is that I'm glad we're all going to be, you know, keeping a close eye on this, Andy, and I would really pull, be, be hair-triggered in terms of pulling, pulling the, the trigger on this taxable refunding earlier rather than, than later, because it's probably not going to be a return to lower interest rates once this thing starts rolling forward. So I hope we will be inclined to get the benefits that we can get rather than wait for the golden egg to be laid later on. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilman Spriggs, this is Manager Hall. That's exactly why we're coming to you tonight. We're coming to you a little bit early. But what that does is it gives us that ability to, to pull the trigger just as quickly as we can if we see any movement in the markets. That's why we want to get all of the, the, the background work completed and all of the ordinances passed, so that we can do what we did last time, which is to move very quickly should we see movement in the interest rates. So really appreciate the board coming together and doing this now and giving us that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great, saying, Councilmember West, go ahead.
Yeah. Great questions there, Councilmember Spriggs. I think, I think the realities of the, of the economy bouncing back even within a year is, is there's a lot of underlying issues that I think we need that are still out there. I mean, unemployment is, is, is way off the charts. And, and the realities of working is going to be different. I mean, a lot of these companies are moving very rapidly to, to a more, less people in the workforce. And I, I don't think that this is, this is going to be something that the next administration is going to have to focus on as, as, as we try to rebound from this. I think that, you know, the stock market is, is disconnected from reality right now. I think that it is, it is doing quite well and, and it is, it is unbelievable and because there's so many other things that are just very scary times for the, the average person and for the average person in Imperial Beach, which makes us, I know that City Manager Hall and Assistant City Manager Cortez, you guys have got the I and B, and I am happy that you brought this to us now so you can pull the trigger in the event that it does, that we need to. So I will be supporting the, the recommendation, and good job. And thank you, Mr. Kramer, for the brief.
Thank you, Mr. West. Councilmember Patton, any comments?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think most has, most have been said. Thank you for the presentation. It was very detailed. You know, when I see option one, you know, with getting this much, and option two looks like the golden egg. I'm always an option-one type of guy. But I, I do trust all of you, and I trust the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, as well as the whole board to make the right decision and to jump on this at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone, and thanks for the presentation. You know, the big picture is, as Mayor Portman Gary mentioned, is, you know, our partner agency is going to be saving money, which means they have more money for kids to get educated. And our city will have more money so we can put more money back into investing in our residents with great public facilities and infrastructure, like the role model that Greg Cox showed us a public service should be. So I, I love it when numbers and smart financial management lead to better outcomes for our community and better investments that we can make to make people's lives better. So I appreciate this great work to help us do that. And with that, I would like to entertain a resolution to approve, I'm sorry, entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 20, Number SA-20-77.
No moves, Spriggs.
West second.
Mayor, could I just make a comment before we vote?
Sure.
A, a very quick one. I, I think one of the reasons for my, and I, I get the sense Councilmember Patton is also not a golden goose kind of guy either. The, the margins this time around are much tighter. The amount that we're actually going to gain from this refunding at the favorable rates that exist right now is, is relatively small for Imperial Beach. It's, of course, larger for the other entities. But as interest rates rise, that's going to shrink. And so we're going to go from a smaller margin than, than we had last time we refunded to a, to, to an even smaller one. So I really think this has got to be hair-trigger, like I said before, if we're going to get anything out of this at all. So thanks, thanks a lot. I just wanted to make that comment in terms of the margins we have right now, which are not very great.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Spriggs, and City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by West, to approve SA-20-77. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Portman Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much, and thanks, everyone, for the presentation. Now, we have an additional item on Resolution Numbers, Item Number Two, Resolution Numbers SA-20-78 and SA-20-79 of the Imperial Beach Development, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and City Hall, City Manager Hall will give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is City Manager Hall. First, I want to welcome our council, our, our successor agency council. Kendall Levan is with us tonight. So if you have any questions, feel free, and Kendall is with us tonight, can answer any of those. But I want to make sure that the city count, I'm sorry, the board, as well as the public, understand the obligations of the former redevelopment agency. So you do have some obligations, and they are to make sure that we make the debt service payments for the tax allocation bonds that we were just talking about. There are some continuing project costs. For instance, we still have some project costs on Pier South, which was a redevelopment project. There are litigation expenses, there are administrative costs. So essentially, the, the redevelopment agency is generating tax increment, and some of that can be used for the city to administer these programs. And so the city gets about $250,000 to administer the obligations of the former redevelopment agency. And there's some other miscellaneous expenses. The ROPS is very routine. That is something that we have to adopt on a regular basis. And the adoption of the ROPS, which is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, will be addressing the obligations of the successor agency between July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2022. So I know that that seems a little strange, but these are adopted ahead of time rather than, these, these are not reimbursement. We adopt these budgets ahead of time so that we can get the money from the state in order to retire these obligations, including the debt service payments that we have on the bonds that we were just talking about. So again, I know this is a very routine matter for the city council. I'm here for any questions you might have, and Kendall is here if you have any questions for her. But once again, these are fairly routine, and this is a request to adopt the resolution that establishes the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule for the former redevelopment agency. Thank you, Mayor. Or, I'm sorry, Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Patton, any questions or comments?
I do not.
Great. Mr. West, any questions or comments?
Nope, I'll be supporting.
Great. Mr. Spriggs?
Just one question. You won't be surprised. Mr. Hall, are we asking for roughly the same amount in ROPS funding this time around as we did last time around? And if, if not, what are the, what are the differences? I mean, how much of a difference is there?
Yeah. Councilmember Spriggs, this is Manager Hall. Yeah, it's almost identical. And the amount that we get for the administrative costs is the minimum amount that the state allows. It's 3% of your, of your indebtedness or 250,000, which is, whichever is less. And so we usually end up with that 250,000, and that's pretty consistent.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Portman Gary, any questions or comments?
No questions. I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And with that, are there any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So the public comment period is now closed. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number SA-20-78 and, and SA-20-79.
Motion, aye.
Second, Spriggs.
And now City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
There has been a motion by Patton, second by Spriggs, to approve SA Resolution Numbers SA-20-78 and SA-20-79. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Portman Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, everyone. And now we go on to the report item, of report section of the meeting, and we have item number one. And this is a real good one, actually really good news and really nice. Consideration of Resolution Number 2020-121, Accepting a Donation From the Chuck and Ernestine Kreutz Camp Foundation to Replace Children's Playground Equipment in Veterans Park. Maybe this may be as good as it gets in Imperial Beach. So City Manager Hall will give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is City Manager Hall. I had nine department heads that wanted to give this report. I told them, none of them get to give it. I get to give this one. But no, this is really exciting. So the mayor was contacted by the Kreutz Camp Foundation about doing a project here in Imperial Beach. But they wanted to know whether or not we could react on a quick timeline. And so I think they contacted the mayor on Saturday, or Saturday evening, and the mayor had me get ahold of them on a Sunday. By Monday, our project had been approved, and they had written a check and sent it to the city, which we received it the following Wednesday. So I really wanted to make sure to commend the staff. They worked over a weekend to put this application together. Did a fantastic job, met the obligations of the foundation, and we were able to receive a, what I believe might be the largest cash donation ever presented to the city of Imperial Beach to replace the playground equipment in Veterans Park. We are really excited to also announce that we have met with the Kreutz Camp Foundation, and they have shown interest in continuing to work with the city on some of our future projects. So we're pretty excited for this. This is just really, really good news, and really appreciate the staff and how quickly they reacted, because I think that that is a big reason why we were able they reacted because I think that that is a big reason why we were able to get this grant. So Mayor, with that, I would turn it over to you for any comments or questions from the council, but really excited this happened.
Yeah, no, first, thanks, Mr. Hall. And you know, this is a real team effort. We got this, thankfully, all of us, many of us responded to emails on Saturday and Andy, Mr. Hall, got his team going on a weekend. I think by Monday, they had that proposal ready and the check got cut. But most importantly, Chuck Kreutz Camp, who's passed away, grew up in Imperial Beach, he's a Marvista graduate, a very well-known sponsor and supporter of the Boys and Girls Club, longtime supporter of that, very good friends with the Webb family and their, you know, I think combined investment in the Boys and Girls Club, but very, very prominent business owner in Imperial Beach, property owner, property manager, not only in Imperial Beach, but throughout the South Bay. So we want to thank the Kreutz Camp family, really honoring the legacy of their dad and his really commitment to kids. I think that's what we really heard, is the commitment to children and making sure that we put children first. So I know that's something that we really, it means a lot to us in Imperial Beach. And we talked to the foundation and made sure that this, we're going to prioritize getting this going. And I know I talked to Mr. Hall today, that it needs to be the number one priority for the city. We have many priorities, but in terms of infrastructure and getting things done, let's make sure we get this done as soon as possible. Our kids deserve it. And I'm going to show these donors that we appreciate this type of money. These are not every day that a homegrown philanthropist and foundation invest back in Imperial Beach. This is the first time it's happened, at least on my watch. And so with this type of donation, and so I'm going to show them that we appreciate the investment, more importantly, that we appreciate Chuck's, you know, life of service to Imperial Beach. So with that, I'm going to make sure, just before we open up the council comments, do we have any additional public comments, City Clerk Kelly?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Are there any comments from council colleagues, starting with Mayor Proton McGarry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a big tremendous thank you to the Kreutz Camp Foundation. I mean, this is wonderful. It'll be such a welcome addition for kids in the community. And thanks to staff for being so diligent and responding to the call for proposals. So it's exciting. I'm very happy for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Spriggs?
Ditto. Thank you to the Kreutz Camp Foundation and their successors and executors and also to you, Mayor, and City Manager and staff for being able to move so quickly on this. It really shows how we can respond to challenges as we have and to opportunities like this. So I'm very grateful for this and it'll be great for our community.
Mr. West?
Just quickly, I think this shows so much on what the city of Imperial Beach staff and leadership on the council and in the mayor can do. We can't offer huge bonds to people. We can't do those things. What we can be, we can be nimble and we can do it quickly. And I, this was exactly a demonstration of that ability. So my hat is off to you, Mayor, and staff to get this done. And it's so good. Those, we all know that the Veterans Park Playground gets played all the time and it needs, this update and replacement will be great for all of our residents. So, good job.
Great. And Mr. Patton?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's funny when they ask, can we react quick? They must not know us very well. If we wanted a concert on the pier, how fast did we get that going? Like that, a playground? Wow, this is amazing. You know, I really want to thank them for this Kreutz Camp. This is something that is beyond amazing. And I really think that we need to look into some PR as well as some getting it out to the newspapers, as many other people as possible, to let people know this is happening in Imperial Beach. Maybe we could get that ball rolling for some more foundations that want to help out our kids in Imperial Beach. I know certainly I'd like to be part of the Kreutz Camp Foundation and connect with them to give some assistance in what I think, what we can do in the future. And I'm just looking forward to what's next. Thank you.
No, great. Thanks, everybody. And I think it was our conversation yesterday with them, we really emphasized this has been a team effort and that the entire council and our city staff, and obviously our residents are committed to investing in kids and, you know, families, as well as our seniors. And so, you know, this is leverage and, you know, partial match for a potential state grant for, to revitalize the senior center with the community center. So, you know, I think this is a start and, you know, I'm going to hats off to you, Councilmember Patton. I think you've been a visionary as well in making sure that we commit to parks and recreation and getting these facilities back, right? Like that's, that's something we're going to see a lot of in 2020 and 2021, or what I call year zero, where we get to start over. And, you know, this pandemic has shown that, you know, our kids have really suffered. All of us have suffered, but our kids have really suffered not having access to these resources. And it's clear that this is more important than ever. So we'll commit to that and I'm thank you. I'm going to thank Mr. Hall for his commitment to making sure we get this done quickly. But more importantly, I got to see the city staff in action responding to this and just the level of professionalism and being on it was not government-like. It was private sector-like, right? Like they understood how important it was to move quickly and they just did it. It was real, really fantastic team effort. And I know we can expect that kind of, that kind of professionalism as we move forward to build a project. So with that, unless there's any more public comment or any public comment, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-121 to allow acceptance of a charitable donation in the amount of 150,000 from the Chuck and Ernestine Kreutz Camp Foundation. Is there a motion?
Yep. Patton?
Aye. Second.
There has been a motion by Patton and second by McGarry to approve Resolution Number 2020-121. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, definitely, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, definitely, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Likewise, definitely aye for Spriggs.
Mayor Proton McGarry, how do you vote?
Definitely aye.
Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
A big high five, aye.
Awesome. Motion carried unanimously.
Wait, was that the first awesome I've heard from City Clerk Kelly?
Yes.
I'm copying you, Mr. Mayor.
We're noting that for the archives, to the public. So, thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. It's a big team effort. Really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to getting more of that next year. I just want to just acknowledge that Councilmember West and Patton, really when you were last council meetings, we were doing this type of stuff, you guys have played a major role in making this type of stuff happen. You believe in this, these types of activities, like a thousand, a million percent, and you've gone over and above for to make these types of things happen. So thank you to make Ivy a better place for our kids and families. And now another great, bit of great news. All kinds of good things happening. Now we have item number two, and that's Presentation to Recognition of Imperial Beach as a Designated Blue City by Project O. And that's Environmental Natural Resources Director Helmer will introduce the item. And I know we have Rich Sherman here, who's overseeing that project with us as well. So take it away, Chris.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Natural Resources Director Chris Helmer. Tonight, Imperial Beach is being recognized as a certified blue city through the Blue City Network. The Blue City Network is a certification system to acknowledge the city's commitment to healthy oceans and waterways. As part of the Blue City Network, the city will continue to collaborate with other cities and counties and will receive support from a network of nonprofits, help the city implement and develop further programs that protect oceans and waterways. Imperial Beach, along with Manhattan Beach, are the first two cities in the country to have successfully completed the Blue City Certification Program. So some of the major accomplishments, which obviously council is very familiar with, that really makes our city a blue city, is we're launching a citywide organic recycling program in April 2021. We developed a climate action plan and we're tracking our implementation for climate action plan. We established the San Diego Community Power, which is one of the largest community choice energy programs in the country. We support numerous cleanup efforts, including the Imperial Beach Clean Cities Initiative and Tijuana River Action Month and other activities to keep our city clean. We protect ecosystems all around Imperial Beach. You know, we have our Tijuana Estuary, South San Diego Bay Wildlife Refuge, and the offshore marine protected area off Imperial Beach. Imperial Beach is a big part of the San Diego Pure Water Program to recycle water in Imperial Beach, in all of San Diego County. And then the city implements green infrastructure. And then also, not like, not the least, but our efforts in Tijuana River is really exemplary for why we are really considered a blue city. So with that, tonight we have Rich German, who's the founder of Project O, and he'll say a few words and then present this recognition to the city. So go ahead, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Helmer. Thank you so much, Chris. So hello, Imperial Beach. My name is Rich German. As Chris said, I'm the founder of Project O, and we are super honored to be here tonight to acknowledge and congratulate Imperial Beach on becoming a certified blue city, only the second in the entire world. Imperial Beach, with over four miles of coastline, has absolutely proven to be a community committed to healthy waterways and ocean. And this is a complicated certification process. It involved an assessment where we evaluated your current environmental initiatives within categories that include waste minimization, climate protection and community resilience, water quality and efficiency, and healthy ecosystems. And upon completion, your city scored high, landing in the Ocean Hero Tier of Certification. And Certification allows communities to credibly and transparently track progress towards your overall sustainability objectives. And as part of the Blue City Network, your city will continue to receive support from us and our nonprofit partners in your efforts to further protect the ocean and the overall health of your residents. And I just want to give special acknowledgement to your whole team. That was amazing. In fact, Serge, you might recall, oh gosh, this has been a couple of years in the making, and I've known you fortunately now for several years. And when we came to you with this opportunity, we got to meet with your whole team. Specifically, I want to acknowledge Mark West, definitely you, Mayor Serge, and Chris Helmer for sure, for your significant efforts on this project. And when we met with you the first time, you guys were like, where do we sign up? Like you guys really wanted this. And now you have it and we are just honored to present this to you today. So on behalf of myself and our whole team at Project O, congratulations, Imperial Beach.
Well, hey, thanks, Rich. And you know, it's actually an honor to be also in the same league as in Manhattan Beach, a city that I was in, you know, a couple of years ago. And I grew up in LIV before I moved to IB. And, you know, it's a great beach, sports, athletic city that really embraces a relationship with the ocean. So it's a great partnership. And we look forward to being in a partnership with other cities as well, not only in California, but around the world. And Mr. West, you want to open up since you played such a big role in making this happen?
I just want you to know that, Rich, I couldn't be happier right now than when, I remember when we sat in the office and talked about this, all of the good ideas and all of the things we were doing, and it really fit in with the whole Blue City Initiative. So I can't tell you how proud I am of you and your team at Project O to make sure that we can do this. Because I think this is a, what you're rolling out here can be really the catalyst for our entire coastline. And I look forward to cities like Boulder, Colorado, and those cities inland that are committed to, that can be blue cities inside our United States as well. So I, Rich, whatever I can do to help you grow this and make sure that we are moving forward with this throughout our regions, I am 100% committed to that. And then, Chris Helmer, you, once again, rose to the occasion because you got Mayor Dedina and I sitting there going, yes, 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 yes. And you're going, oh God, I'm going to have to execute all these things now. So once again, Chris, you did a great job and this is fantastic news. And Rich, it's good to see you, man. You look great, brother. And this is great news. So thank you so much.
I think if I can, real quick, I just want to acknowledge you again, Mark, and say how this is not only an acknowledgement of the great work that you guys are doing as a city, but you are also now a model, to your point mentioning, not only other cities along the coast of California, but this is ultimately will be a global program that we take inland. Because as we know, what occurs inland affects especially cities like yours on the coast. So you guys are now really serving as a model for cities all around the country and the world of what's possible. So thank you.
Great.
No, and that's more important than ever. And that's why we said we need to walk the walk and talk the talk when it comes to making sure when we talk to Mexico and Tijuana, that they can't say, oh, well, you guys are doing the same thing. Like, you know, our, you know, professionalism in terms of how we manage the environment and protect the ocean is top notch. And now we have the certification to prove it. So we can hammer authorities in Mexico to say, hey, you guys can't make any excuses about, you know, cleaning the ocean. And hopefully, this will give them an incentive. And we have other cities in Mexico that can do this because a lot of cities in Mexico deserve this type of certification. Before we move on to other council members, I would be remiss if I didn't ask our city clerk if we have any additional public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands and I do not have any written comments.
Great. And then just from my council colleagues, if you don't know that, Rich and I met, thinking of an event at the Newport Beach Library, but Rich has been single-handedly really helped document the resurgence and return of giant ocean animals and huge volumes of marine mammals off Laguna Beach and that sort of Southern Orange County coast. I want to thank you for that, Rich. I think you really opened a lot of people's eyes to the power and beauty of our wild ocean in Southern California and why it's arguably one of the most important sort of ocean habitats on the planet and connects these giant ocean corridors that go from the north all the way to the south and all the way to the east, right? So I want to appreciate it. You've done a great job with that and you've got a big following for that and I appreciate that. So I think it's a natural extension of that awareness issue and why we can restore the ocean, right? And there are concrete steps we can do for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Proton McGarry, if you have any questions or comments.
No, just a quick, thank you, Rich, for all the work that you do as a full-time conservationist. I can very much appreciate the work that you're doing and thank you for this recognition. Did you say we're the second in the country or the world?
Both. Second in the world.
Wow. That is, that is amazing. What a night for Imperial Beach. Thank you for this recognition. Thank you, Mayor Dedina, Councilmember West, and Director Helmer for your efforts to get us here. Now we're certified and we have a super cool pier. I mean, we're winning. Thank you.
And thank you, guys. I appreciate the kind words, but tonight is all about you, not me. But I do appreciate the words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton McGarry. And now Councilmember Spriggs, any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. And Rich, I have not been that familiar with your organization, but as someone who is very, very much interested in our environment and our wildlife and the health of our residents, et cetera, I am so pleased for this, this recognition to our hardworking community. You know, the achievements that we've made here are in the context of struggle. They're not easy in our environment. And that's, that's why I think this is so important for Imperial Beach. And again, I thank Chris and the mayor and Councilmember West for, you know, your important work on this. This is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And Mr. Patton?
Yeah. Just a quick thank you to Chris Helmer and Rick German, Project O, and Certified Blue City. This fits us perfect. And I just have to say, go IB blue. You know, this is the right direction. I agree with a Councilmember, Gary, right direction. Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody. And I appreciate it. And really, that's a great ending to our city council meeting. But yeah, nobody appreciates the power of blue and ocean more than Imperial Beach because we've suffered so much from pollution. And that's why we're fighting so hard to clean it up. And so with that, again, thanks, Rich, and thanks to the Blue City Network and Project O for your support. But also, Mr. Helmer, you are an amazing resource for our city and our planet, right? So we appreciate all the great work that you can do to make these types of things happen. And our city manager, Mr. Hall, for your support. So with that, I would like to adjourn the regular meeting at 6:49 PM. And we are adjourned the regular meeting to December 9, 2020 at 5:00 PM. We will be saying goodbye to a couple of our council colleagues and saying hello to a couple of new colleagues. So thank you very much, everybody, and have a great evening.